All right, we'll just go ahead and get started. We've got a pretty robust agenda this evening. So first off, I would like to call the meeting of the Duval City Council meeting on April 21st, 2020 to order at 7:04 PM via Zoom. And we do have a couple of guests on the phone and are waiting for Councilmember Iyer to rejoin us and as well as Councilmember Hoag.
I'm thinking, Mayor, I'm thinking they may not have gotten the second thing. I just got something from both of them asking me to send them the invite again. So it might be just a couple of minutes for them, but we can, we can move forward.
Okay. So with that, will we, will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Indivisible, liberty and sprawl. And Clerk, would you please take the role as it stands right now? And we can recognize the others as they join.
Councilmember Brunnicki, here. Councilmember Iyer. Councilmember McHenry, here. Councilmember Remington. Councilmember Hoag. Not here. Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, please add payroll for April 20th, 2020 in the amount of $148,337.68 and claims for April 21st, 2020 in the amount of $112,279.79. Also, please add under, under admin, a report from Public Works Director Steve Lenashevsky on 275th Avenue. And are there any council members that would like to speak this evening?
I would briefly.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Napland?
Yes, it was. Thank you so much.
All right. All right, with that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you ask for committee reports? I'm sorry.
Committee reports are on the scheduled items, so we'll go ahead and get to that one on the scheduled items.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Tom Remington moved. Councilmember McHenry seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Brunnicki moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lengel seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move to comments from the audience.
Mayor, Councilmember Hoag and Iyer are both in now.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Hoag or Councilmember Iyer, did you have any desire to speak during, under council this evening?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to give one more chance for that. So moving on, next is comments from the audience. It looks like we do have a couple of folks by phone. First off, Clerk Wykoff, did we have any emails or called in public comments this evening?
Yes, we do have one email. Tried not to lose it on my desk. This is from Heather Downing. And it reads, hello, council members. I hope you and all of your families are doing well. I know you are all doing the best job you can for our city and community. I appreciate that all of you are doing as I know being, I'm sorry, I appreciate all that you are doing as I know being on the city council is not always easy, but very needed. A few weeks ago, I found out about a project on 275th Avenue Northeast that will be going in behind our home. I learned of the project after the city council had voted on the project. Had I known, I would have attended the meeting to voice my concerns. I am not sure if it is too late, however, I wanted to express my feelings regarding the project. I totally agree that we need to have sidewalks on both sides of the streets in Duval and along 275th. Here are my concerns. Number one, the cost of the additional benches and workout area could be spent continuing the sidewalk around the corner on 150th. There is no sidewalk in this area on 150th across from Jud Park. And it is, and is actually a more dangerous spot not to have a sidewalk. I see cars flying around the corner from 275th Avenue Northeast onto 150th and pedestrians cross the road here all the time. It seems a better use of our money is to extend the sidewalk down 275th at the road's edge and around the corner on 150th to meet up with the next sidewalk, making this area much safer for pedestrians. Two, additional cost for maintenance because the sidewalk is set back five feet from the road rather than right at the road, matching the sidewalk across the street. The city would have to pay for the cost of maintaining this area. I have not seen the city maintain the grassy area on 275th Avenue Northeast right before the new sidewalk project area. Three, will people really use this workout equipment on a busy road? It seems to me it would be better placed in an area where people go to workout such as the trail or Big Rock Park. Four, is this, is this the best time with social distancing to put in a project with benches and workout area that people will not be able to use? Also, many people are struggling financially and how will this reflect on the city? Could the city portion, could the city portion for the project be better spent helping Duval residents with necessities such as food, rent, mortgages, utility assistance, and mental health needs? Five, lastly, and very importantly, the city of Duval has been through a lot of transition in staff, especially in positions dealing with finances. And this is, and is this project and the addition of benches and workout area a good decision to proceed at this time until someone is able to review and make the best decision for the city and its residents? Thank you so much for reading my concerns. Thanks so much for all of your great work. Take care. Heather Downing.
Thank you. And Clerk, could you please forward that to me so that Mr. Lenashevsky and I can appropriately respond?
Will do.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone that would like to have public comment? And if so, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any.
Not at this time.
Perfect. Great, thank you. And so moving on, we'll go to the mayor's report. A lot of the same honestly for the last couple of weeks. Most of my work has been related to COVID and the programs that we've developed as well as developing policy, keeping in contact with our congressional delegation as they've been working on a forced stimulus package, trying to get some of that funding directed directly to local governments instead of jurisdictions 500,000 and above. And also working with the members of the Chamber of Commerce to hear their concerns, find out what they're going through, as well as try and come up with creative ideas that we can help them. As councils saw in the committee of the whole, one of the small things, or I'm sorry, it will be coming up in this meeting. One of the small things that we are working on doing is temporarily waiving sign fees for our small businesses so that they can do a little more advertising. We already have the utility deferral and payment system in place that doesn't just impact residents, it impacts business as well. We've been working on behalf of our small businesses with sharing information with our congressional and legislative offices. The good news is that as of today, I'm finally starting to get emails from our small businesses that they are being approved for loans, even though they're small amounts. They desperately need some more assistance and I'm hoping that more is on the way with the bill that passed the Senate this afternoon. In addition, we are continuing to talk about summer events. As of this point, we all know Duval Days is canceled. I just heard from the Duval Foundation for the Arts that they will be moving Sandblast to the end of August. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to at least meet smaller groups of 100 to 250 by that point. And of course, we still are moving ahead with summer stage. One of the things that has come up is that in attending the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network Leaders Meeting last week is that if folks are not aware, hopefully because it's bannered, their food, rent, utility assistance, and transportation assistance. And Snoqualmie Valley Transit is actually delivering items to folks for free that don't have mobility. So and as our emergency manager mentioned before, we have the hotline now. No one's used it yet, but it's there and available for folks. As we talked a little bit earlier, one of the, the challenges is going to be the recovery process. And as we get more information, we're not looking at just one wave, we're looking at a second wave that may be worse. And so as I mentioned in committee of the whole, internally, we'll be planning for that. And that will change how our recovery looks. The good news is in the presentation that Councilmember Lengel referred to in the committee of the whole is that the county is predicting that cities like ours, being bedroom communities, will be the, the silver linings in all of this because we're not sales tax dependent. That also makes it more difficult for us to predict what revenue we will actually lose versus what we will receive. There is some speculation that we won't be hit as hard on the sales tax side because of all of the online sales. Because most people are not only buying online, but the other side is that people are buying many more groceries locally than they have in the past. So it's going to be an interesting road to see what happens there. We're keeping in close contact administratively, having multiple meetings a week to discuss this and trying to get more solid information and moving things forward. The Sound Cities Board did meet last week. We have all essential business to take care of. And we did pass a motion to freeze all Sound Cities Association members dues for 2021. So there will not be a dues increase, which will provide a small amount of budget buffer for us. Of course, Sound Cities is continuing to keep us up to date day to day, helping coordinate our phone calls with the governor's office and others, and continue to participate in, in calls with the White House and the Bloomberg Mayor's philanthropy and others as they come about and as time allows. Those have definitely been good resources and hearing what other folks are doing gives us ideas of what we can do to move forward. As we all know, as Sean pointed out earlier, we're not likely to, you know, things are not going to go back to normal May 4th and the preparation for that is becoming more challenging, I think, as we've been in quarantine for more than a month and looking for creative ways to kind of boost morale. Thank you to Bebe Cates and Councilmember McHenry and the Police Department and others for pulling together the birthday brigades for the kids in the city. I think that's been a really positive, had a positive impact on everyone's moves and moods and brings just a nice little bright spot to the day. With that, you know, as we look at finances, again, you know, we are in a much better spot than others compared to us, compared to especially where we were in 2008. In 2008, I don't believe we had many reserves. We certainly did not have buyout lines for our salaries and we didn't have contingency nearly to the amount that we do have now. So it will help us definitely weather the storm. The question is how long the storm lasts. And we're looking at all of those things every day and keeping track of what we need to accomplish, as well as looking at what projects we're not going to be able to get done or just may not get done this year due to the COVID situation. Depending on when construction comes back, some of our projects just might not be able to occur, which in itself is a cost savings, but it doesn't eliminate the need for those projects. It simply kicks the can further down the curve. And that's part of what we'll be planning for. So I think that's the gist of things. I can personally say that I have seen a lot more people out and about, not social distancing. There was a rally at the state Capitol this weekend in which some Republican state legislators actually called on people to revolt against the police and those trying to enforce the laws, which is a bit unnerving to me, as well as what's going on in other states with governors reopening their economies as their numbers are still going up. And what that impact that may have on us indirectly and directly, indirectly from the nationwide situation perhaps not plateauing as fast as it could. And that of those individuals that may be exposed in other states traveling to our state because we don't have a way to just keep them out. So those are big concerns that I'm weighing and looking at as time goes on. But you know, the sky is not falling, but we do have a lot to be worried about, a lot to be concerned about and pay attention to as this time goes on. And that's my report. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we have Councilmember Napland would like to speak for council.
So I just wanted to report that I have volunteered to be on the task force with the Snoqualmie Valley Transportation Coalition. They called for volunteers to join a smaller group and they wanted to make sure they had someone from each city, maybe an elected official and a staff member. So they have created a five-year transportation plan and they need help working on a priority list. So I volunteered to help with that. And my understanding is Steve Lenashevsky also attends that. And they said they were open for another member from Duval, potentially a staff member would be great to help with that project list. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing is that I am a member of the East Side Transportation Partnership and we were notified that King County Metro is having a virtual town hall to talk about some of the service cuts and the impacts. And it's for elected officials and staff who want to attend. And I, I can't find the exact email, but in one of them it said, you know, elected officials or staff could be used to communicate some of the concerns of the community. And so I started thinking, well, how, how will I find that out? So I have a question for Mayor Okerlander. Is that something that we could ask on social media and say, hey, if you're having trouble with transportation, could you please contact the city and let us know your concerns? What are your issues? Because otherwise, I think it's really difficult for me to, to reach that broad of an audience. And I think it'd be really neat to have some of that feedback.
We can, we can definitely do that. I've been in contact with senior level staff at Metro in the last few weeks as they've announced the cuts. And basically, we, we don't have any service left other than SVT at this point. So it is going to impact our community and Metro is going to be looking as they come out of this, completely restructuring everything that they do. So any feedback that we can get will be appropriate. I think we might want to wait a little bit till more of the impacts are seen and seeing what, what if any changes Snoqualmie Valley Transportation is forced to do. I'm hoping that they retain the funding that they've been getting from Metro, but we absolutely can pull the city and just ask for feedback. We can have Sean put something up on the page with an email or info email address and just have them share that information and aggregate it and get it out to Metro. And as I have more of those meetings with some of their, their staff, you know, sharing the firsthand experiences instead of just anecdotal will be very helpful. So yes.
Thank you. I'm done, so I can't remember who is next.
We didn't have anybody on the council report side, but we do have council committee. And I believe the Human Services Ad Hoc Committee met yesterday to review the four applications that we received from human services agencies in regards to emergency grant funding.
Yeah, so thank you. Actually, there were five. And we, so myself, Councilmember Lengel and Councilmember Iyer met with Director Mason via Zoom. And we just talked about the different, they were basically one to two-page letters that each organization sent in about what they, how much money they would like and what they would use it for. So I'll just go down really quick, but I can also forward this email from Dana about, you know, if you want to see the request amount or if you have any other questions, I can get you that information. So to Acres of Diamonds, they had requested some for rent assistance, utilities, food and household essentials assistance to their families there. And we awarded $2,000. The Holy Innocents Catholic Church Food Pantry for food assistance, we actually awarded a little more than they asked for because we see a huge value in how that serves many communities and, or sorry, many sects of the population. So we awarded them $8,000. Hope Link had put a request in for rent assistance. They had said it will help Duval households. And so this should help them with a little more than four households in Duval. We're awarding $6,000. The Snoqualmie Valley Community Network had asked for $7,000 and we awarded $7,000. That amount of money will enable them to buy all the food that they need for the Valley Power Packs through the end of the school year. And I think that's really important because it enables them to focus now on fundraising for any summer food opportunities or other things they might need to do. And then the last one, Snow Valley Senior Center, we awarded $7,000. Again, that's for food assistance. As where they used to have the senior lunches and other meals, now everything has to be to-go. The to-go containers are a huge expense that they've never had to budget on this scale for. They're also doing really great things like delivering puzzles and jokes and just helping people with all kinds of stuff, medication. They do deliver to some Duval seniors. And that adds up to $30,000. That's what we came up with yesterday.
Excellent. Thank you. So when will I receive those recommendations so we can get working on contracts?
I think, oh, sorry, Director Mason, were you the one? I thought you were going to send the email, but is it supposed to be me?
I forwarded it to Jody and I'll also send it to you, Amy, as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Are there any council committees that have reports this evening? Councilmember Hoag?
So the Finance Committee met on Wednesday and the mayor and Laura and Chief Hurt and Councilmember Lengel and Councilmember Napland attended. And so what we've been working on is kind of reviewing the budget amendments. And as we talked about during the council meeting, it is pretty concerning to be looking at what's coming forward. So I know that at the next meeting, Dana Mason will be bringing something forward. So I, I hope that we'll be getting to, you know, information way ahead of time. I know that some things have been put on the one, is it on a one chart? Is that correct? Some things have been uploaded.
Yeah, so the, the PowerPoint that everyone has seen except for, I think, Councilmember Brunnicki is on the OneDrive. It's in the council packets under committees and then finance and administrative committees. And then there's also the line item, budget adjustments, if you want to look at them by fund.
So everybody can look at those now?
Yep.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. And then the other thing we talked about was the attorney amendment to the attorney contract that we'll be reviewing tonight. And then we've stepped up our meetings to once a week. So we will be meeting again on Wednesday before the next council meeting. So I don't know if Jennifer, Councilmember Napland, or Councilmember Lengel want to share anything else, but you're welcome to.
I will, everybody.
I'll just, I'll just share something that I can't remember if we also heard about this at a council meeting, but I, it's just a pretty exciting thing that we negotiated a new banking agreement, which will save us a lot of money. And I can't remember if the whole council has heard about that. And I said we as in the city, but it was really Director Mason. And we're just thrilled about it. And I don't know, I don't know if he wanted to share something about that, but that was really some great news. We're thrilled. The new bank is Washington Federal and it should save the city about $15,000 a year in banking fees. So it's a significant savings. We did have to buy a check scanner, but it's, and then we'll also have to have our transport come and pick up a deposit, just the currency deposit once a week. So there, there is some cost there, but it's still quite a bit of savings.
Thank you. Moving, moving on, we have admin report. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hoag?
Councilmember Lengel. Councilmember Lengel, if your hand was up, I didn't see it first, so.
I think, I think, I put the little blue hand up. Remember the little participant?
Yeah, I can't, it doesn't work well on my screen to see that.
Okay, that's fine.
In the window.
I just wanted to add something to the discussion on the, looking at the budget amendments. One of the, one of the reasons I feel so passionately about getting into the deep dive is, yes, we are blessed that Duval is bedroom community and it's not as dependent on sales tax. But to give you a flavor of what we're up against, the county projections, the revised projection is a 21% decrease in sales tax for March. And, and when you look into, when they're looking at that continuing into 2021, you're looking at additional reductions at like 11% in sales tax. So we, we're not going to be immune from those kind of massive changes. And, and just to give a little flavor of something that I know the mayor's trying very hard to preserve is the concert series, the, the arts events. We get a lot of support from For Culture, which is part of King County. And For Culture is funded by the hotel motel tax. And that too, where did I just put my little pieces of paper here? That too is looking at a fairly healthy reduction because there's no travel tourism. I think that reduction they're looking at right now, change in projection of, I think it's 28%. So there are many things about Duval we all love, its arts, its culture. But even if we don't have direct impacts around sales tax, well, other sections of the county will, county resources do flow to us through things like For Culture. So lots and lots of work to do over the next couple of months. I'm done.
Councilmember Hoag, did you have something? Thank you. All right. So moving on to admin reports, I'll let Mr. Lenashevsky go first as far as the 275th update and then let Ms. Thomas go.
Sorry, Laura. Okay, so it was brought to my attention recently this week that I neglected to bring forward an update, not purposely per se, but nonetheless, we didn't bring forward an update on the 60% plan. So we didn't have 60s, we had 75s. Nonetheless, they came in at the end of February and we have reviewed those as staff. I did feel that I had a strong summary with council over the last few months on this project. You know, remembering too, I was not here from the inception and I brought forward some safety needs that I believe we, we do have at the intersection. But just to update what happened between council discussions and we received our 75s and then the, what we call the bid set. So originally starting this, the council was reluctant to engage in a wider meandering and almost doubly wide sidewalk. So we had a eight to 10 foot wide pathway that staff originally discussed, whether it was with council. And again, I wasn't here, but I know it was certainly with the Transportation Improvement Board, who is the granting body on this. So those are at six everywhere. Saving trees is paramount, so we did our best to save any and all trees that we could. I do not believe in the evergreen are being impacted. And we're going around the one large maple, which I will scan through the plan here in a minute and see how that goes. The planting is meeting the city's minimum standard, except for two spaces where we have the engagement activity area and then where we go around our large maple tree, which is at the, if you're familiar with the southerly entrance to Miller's Homestead, it's in that region. And those two areas are where we just do a little extra buffering of the area, which is homes to the north or the east, sorry. Trees are planted per standard, which is a city standard. The landscape strip is a city standard. We always have the opportunity to move away from that for environmental considerations, topographical considerations, right-of-way and space considerations. So we have some flexibility, but we are required to do a minimum five-foot walk and a minimum five-foot plan or strip. They can flip-flop and be interchanged, but nonetheless, that's, that's that topic. They can flip-flop and be interchanged, but nonetheless, that's, that's that topic. We converted all the items we discussed as extras as alternates. So lighting up both additionally, the intersection of 150th and 145th, I think it's Place, which is the, the southern end, adding lighting, street lighting. The activity stations are alternate quotes. And the safety improvements for the crosswalk, rapid flashing beacons are also allocated as an addenda, or I'm sorry, as an alternate. So you'll bid the base and then we bid the alternate. So we can certainly pick and choose any of those we do or don't wish to have. That is how we would propose the bid. So that was, you know, meeting council's concerns. I understand it's always seemingly cheaper to place a sidewalk adjacent to a curb. However, arterials, standards, safety practice, the further away the sidewalk is and that separation created, it is better. So we have tried to leave the landscape strip in that space between the curb of the road, curb line of the road and the sidewalk where we can. We're grading the 10-foot area anyway, so there isn't a significant cost difference, whether we put gravel adjacent to the sidewalk or we put gravel five feet away from it. We still have to improve that 10-plus foot area. All the ground cover in the area outside the sidewalk, that is not specifically planted or planned to be planted because of encroachment closer to the fences. And the activity area is, is ceded. The tree count is meeting the minimum standard set by the code. And our landscape strip standard did arrive in 2007. So it was requested, you know, there was a couple of other projects we'd done in the past. We did, we've always done our best to do those landscape strips. And 275th from this project, actually to the south, would have been under a new standard. And it had landscape strips where we could fit them in. Topography, that road existed, so you had homes above and homes below, which made it very difficult to make that grading work. So, and we, we did our best to keep parking, because if you do not recall, on 275th to the south, there was a gravel shoulder that existed where it was, you know, fairly significantly parked by all the homeowners. So that was a, a big project there. But nonetheless, those are the standards we are going up against. So I'm going to share my screen now. I'll just slide through the, the plan set real quick. I'm not sure how productive this might be, so if this isn't any good, we can certainly choose another path. And I can certainly email this out after the meeting or post it to the OneDrive, I think is a much more responsible approach as to not eating up data, I, I believe, Jody. So if you can all see my screen, I have a little marker. Everybody can see that. So this is the intersection of northeast, obviously you see 50th and 275th, so this is the northern end of the project. We are, our project began on this side. We do have to accommodate the crosswalk. We have done so. Sidewalk is adjacent in this area. This is going to be goofy. And then you can kind of see the bump outs as we go along the way. And we move further to the south. There's an existing storm structure here. There's an existing mailbox in this, oh, use the spotlight. There's an existing mailbox here, existing storm grate here. And then we go back to trying to weave in between trees and then plant street trees that are required. Stop that. Moving on to the next page. This is the large maple tree and there is a, a light kind of in that intersection. So we're going around the tree, adding some plantings in that area after meeting with homeowners and discussing the project. Coming back with landscape strip, proposed alternate is the activity area. And I know the one comment that was from the, from the neighbor, you know, maybe they're better placed in areas that are more heavily trafficked by walkers. That's certainly likely a fact, but people will do this wherever it is. I literally saw a guy in the last, I mentioned to some staff and I've seen him before, on Main Street, there was a sign at the dance studio where the Grass Creek entrance is to their, their secondary driveway. It used to have a sign on it. Well, it's just one-inch pipe. He, he's walked by every day this week and he sets his phone down on a bar and he's 65 or older. He may even be older based on how I saw him walk away, but he was, you know, doing pull-ups. So I think these things are present, people will use them. They're, they're just a space to be active. They're not noisy, they're not anything other than stationary. So I, I thought it was interesting to watch him. I was hoping the pipe network wasn't going to fall and this guy ended up on the ground and, you know, one of us had to go out there and help him up, but he, he made it just fine. So cruising again to the south. Fairly straightforward, moving around again. This is an existing fire hydrant that we go around and moving it back to being adjacent to the existing intersection at 145th Lane. So before I share updated cost numbers, is, are there questions on the kind of plan itself and some of the approaches we've taken?
That's a question. Steve, I did have one thing first before you, that, you know, the, the public comment we got was around sidewalks on 150th. And I think I'm wrong, wasn't that conversation discussed with council at the time of applying for this project? And then the additional traffic control measures?
So I know, I'm certain I wasn't here when the TIB grant was applied for and awarded. I was here when we started the design process and I did bring forward adding the safety improvements. And I think, I'll switch screens real quick, see how this works. Because, oh, I have to push the share button. Because I think safety is paramount, you know, we all, lucky or not, I do get to live in the, in the city. So I'm, I feel cognizant of many of the situations and issues that are, are local to us. Screen share didn't work. And, you know, just know that there's an issue in this area. So the image I threw up here, this is, we started collecting data from the police department in 1997 and I'm going to zoom in a little bit. But this, every dot represents a type of accident on our roadway network between 97 and May of 19. So Sarah congregates this stuff, we have a GIS layer on accidents. We receive accident reports that have stricken out, you know, pertinent information. We just want to know what type of accident, you know, rear end, side swipe, pedestrian, by fiscal, whatever it entails, it's color-coded. The key, you know, the key is down here. So, you know, rear ends lost control, other, I don't know if cell phones are other nowadays, but nonetheless, tracking it all. And you can see, you know, when you, when you zoom out, Main Street just received a lot of attention. And that, these are all color-coded, but they're all, they're not year-coded, so we do have different layers for years. I just have a total. But this, you know, this just shows you the congregated areas and impact. Main Street down here and then you have the 275th intersection, which really has the most concentrated areas of, of, you know, accidents outside of, you know, our main arterials, especially on 203. So it is an area that needs improvement. Lighting is terrible. I do receive complaints all the time. I have been explaining to the folks who have been calling that we are working on a project to improve this intersection with, you know, crosswalk improvements and lighting to the best of our abilities, if we can financially afford it. So I'm very hopeful that, that we can. And I did make it, I did bring it forward, like you mentioned, last year, Mayor, on, hey, if we have some cost savings in other departments, can we use, you know, any monies? I proposed using Streets 101 Fund because going over numbers, again, even today, with the LED streetlight conversion, we would, we look to realize a $64,000 savings over the two-year budget cycle, because we budgeted about $212,000. And we're, we're going to spend about 145, 150. So there are savings there, but it is a capital element. These are all capital elements, this is on our tip. 150th, I appreciate the homeowner's concern about coming around the corner and bringing more sidewalk. I'm sure some council get nervous about spending more money, but, you know, it is our duty to serve and it is our duty to improve the system. So there has not been a lot of improvements in this area and it is a very busy intersection. There's a park adjacent, so I do still feel strongly and I'm hopeful we put the bid amendment, or the bid out and those alternates all show that we can, you know, do this within a level of affordability. So I guess that was the mayor's kind of statement slash question. Before I jump into numbers, does anybody want to talk about the plan in itself and making sure I hit the mark with what council thought they would get versus what we talked about in the very beginning?
I had a quick question.
Yeah?
So I was just wondering, and I had to step away for a quick second, so I'm sorry if I missed this. So where the landscape ends and then to the existing neighbors' fences? I know right now it's a lot of vegetation, a lot of blackberry. Remind me, are we leaving that and only, you know, changing where the path is in the surrounding landscape? Or is that, that's not getting turned into grass or anything, is it? I can't remember.
Yeah, I think we have very high hopes that we can get in ahead of any contractor. And, you know, with our new chipper for our machinery, get in there, get a lot of the scrub alder out. There's a couple of like locust trees, they're not protected. We've already talked to planning about what should and shouldn't be removed. Try to get a lot of the just junk out of there and clean it up. Certainly mow down all the blackberry to a ground level. PSC is for that. They certainly can't promise upkeep of what we provide. Should we, you know, whatever we do will be better than what is there now, but, so yeah, the little area, if you can see that's denoted in clearing limits, is whatever we disturb, we will at least cede with grass back. So we aren't showing going past that and getting closer to the properties. But I think the furthest we are is about a 15-foot slot, where the little note floor is on the screen there. Was that answer your question?
Yeah, a quick follow-up on that would just be a question of if, what, I don't know what PSC would allow in terms of, if people wanted to voluntarily plant seedlings back there of something for privacy, is that allowed? Or is that just something they'd have to work out with PSC?
So, yeah, we received a complaint, if you noticed, a couple of weeks ago. We shut the road and PSC came and did a little work on kind of our behalf, but they were cleaning up some of their own needs, limbing up trees fairly high, adjacent to the power lines, helped us with some of the cottonwoods that were on the south end. But they pulled the fur out and we promised the neighbors we weren't pulling any evergreen out. But that neighbor had, we found out, planted that tree there years ago and it's, you know, it's in PSC's power easement. So no, they are very specific on trees that go in their power corridor, shrubs that go in their power corridor, and of course, where they go in their power corridor. You know, we had to accommodate their, their power poles. So perpendicularly to the sidewalk from the back of the curb, there are sections of our concrete sidewalk that are thicker than the others because we have to accommodate their vehicles getting back to some of their power poles that have transformers on them. So no, they're very particular. We have tried to, you know, add shrubbery where we can. PSC has seen this and they are amenable to the, the plan, but they're, they're certainly not going to voluntarily let anybody put trees under their power lines. Things happen and people have done it and they don't come out all that often. Duval is a fine place for them. They're focusing, unfortunately, their efforts on other agencies where they have people living in power corridors, so they actually like to keep them clear to the best of their abilities. But it's kind of, kind of, you know, sad from what you hear about what they are doing elsewhere. So we don't have that, thankfully, but anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Nicky?
So my question is, first off, in regards to the citizens' comment about extending the sidewalk around the corner, I guess is what they were referring to. Would that have to be like a second project because of the way we have already processed it?
Well, I would say certainly. Anything can be done via a change order, but we are maintaining the curb line. I will doodle here to the best of my abilities. The curb exists. We are not intending to change the curb in this area. And, you know, this asphalt's kind of wide and then up here it begins to neck back and get kind of narrow. So it's, we certainly could transition it into the neighborhood. It probably wouldn't be all that costly. So it is certainly possible. It's a, it's a minimum extra cost to probably complete that little section, knowing 150th is a bigger project in itself, capitally. It's on our list for, you know, a capital improvement, but, you know.
And then my second question was, well, not question, but my comment was in regards to their rec equipment for people to work out on. I think like that's actually a good place for it because seeing all the people walking through neighborhoods now. When I was in Australia, they put that, they put their rec equipment right by their sidewalks because people traditionally walk all over the place and, and you see people using them like that. So I think that's kind, that to me looks like a really good addition to the community as far as an enhancement. So I think that's great.
Yeah, and the previous version of what this looked like, oh, not spotlight, where's the draw? Oh, well, let me draw now. It was much more enhanced. It kind of came in and then came out and then got big again. So we had kind of this three-sectioned area. It was maybe not that substantially bigger, but it was, it was bigger than what we ended up with, trying to conserve space, know that it was an alternate, we would like to do it. It's not a must-have, but it's certainly nice to have. And we did talk about it through the process with the granting agency. So it could be, you know, hopefully done. And it's at this level, at a size and scope, if God permitting, we had to do it on our own, you know, maybe the crew could do it after the fact when we, when we could have time and some resources to do that. But I can go over the numbers too and, and explain where we are on expectations.
I have a super quick question. Thank you.
Councilmember Naplin, and I don't know if, just real quickly, did anybody else have questions? I'm scrolling to the other screen. So then Councilmember Naplin and then Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you. I didn't realize Councilmember Iyer had a question. I was looking at the participant hand raise, sorry about that. So I had a, a quick question. Will we need irrigation to get those trees going and what is, is that going to be a cost? And then, Pete, I, that was a really interesting, I don't know, diagram, whatever you want to call it, where it shows the little dots of where the accidents were. And it, it really highlights that there is also an issue at 278. Because what happens is people come out of that neighborhood by Fox Hollow and they have to cross the street right away. And that's a terrible place to cross the street. The lighting's bad. I, I was scared to death. I almost hit a pedestrian. It was pitch black, the pedestrian was wearing black. And I came to turn and he stepped out into the street. And it, the lighting right there at 278, I believe it's 278, maybe you can point, yeah, right there. He came out, he was on the west side, southwest side, right there. And it, you could not see him, there's absolutely no light at all. And anyway, I, I think that's just partly because that's still a lot that hasn't been developed recently. So just no sidewalk on that south side is just really problematic because it causes a lot of people to cross the street right there. And it's just really challenging. So I, Diane Brunnicki brought it up, you know, we, I, I think my preference was to do that leg first, but I know the late streets people really wanted to do the other spot. But I, I would like to contemplate that, that connection right there. Just a lot of people end up crossing it, really bad spots.
Yeah, just on that point, oh, Mayor, you want to go?
I was going to say, yeah, Councilmember Naplin, that's my neighborhood. So we, we experience it pretty much every day. In, in general, we've talked about some, even future traffic calming on 278 as well as 150th. And I think honestly, getting the 275th portion done, which is the missing gap, we got some grant funding further down.
Amy, you pushed mute on yourself.
It's, it's going off on its own, believe it or not. So, so 150th is one of those streets that we've been discussing for traffic calming, should money become available. Because that street is too wide, it makes, it makes it easy for folks to speed. It's a high enforcement area and there are definitely some areas of visibility, not just on 150th or 278 at that intersection, but also down into Taylor's Ridge. And part of that homeowner needs, needs to maintain and part of it's just that we could improve the design if we had the funding to make it more calm and safer.
Yeah, and maybe making just a comment on, I know, I, I understand the heartburn per se on this specific project, but it is contracted with state, TIB. So, you know, getting out of it now is a bad idea. We've spent money, they gave us the 200 grand. It's here, we are using it for design. We hope to go to bid and get the project built. But I think we talked about priorities and whether it's a tip priority or our sidewalk priority, this is a great leg to finish up too. You have the, when I move the little hand cursor, can you guys see that? Okay. So yeah, this, this section and then this section here, those two areas are half the length we're doing. So in reality, you know, that could be a project that is done at the next level. This is a two-year term. This is our second year for the TIB program. This is our second year for the TIB program. We apply again and they give another two-year allotment, you know, um, I guess that's 2021. So, uh, strange things have happened. But yeah, this intersection, part of the problem too, the stop bar is so far back, the whole intersection is completely discombobulated. And try training a 15-year-old driver on that, I mean, it's a nightmare. So, uh, I, I don't dis, I don't discredit that we have other needs certainly throughout our, our system. But I do think we are bound to the project at hand via the application process and acceptance we went through. So, um, there you go. But I, this is a great map, and I'm not sure people knew that we had it. But yes, Sarah in our office updates, um, every quarter. We get a bundle of recs from the cops and we put them on the list.
Uh, Councilmember Iyer, do you still have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just, so, I mean, there, there was kind of a question coming from, uh, Mr. Lenishewski, and also to address the concerns of, uh, Ms. Downing. Um, you know, my take on this from the beginning has been, you know, if, there's a grant amount that's gonna pay for improvements. And, um, you know, uh, that's kind of what I'm looking at in terms of, you know, and I took the, the additional improvements as, you know, it's, as bid additives and, you know, obviously the safety, uh, stuff is, you know, in hierarchy higher than the, than the, uh, additional amenities. And, and even, you know, that, I, I took it as a bridge that we would cross once we got caught, once we got, um, you know, numbers in. Because then it's, what does it mean? I mean, maybe we can do it all for 200,000, right? But, but, and whether that's a reasonable or unreasonable thing, I think it's reasonable that you can build the sidewalk for 200,000. So, um, that's the way I took it. And, uh, the stuff on top is, is great, and I think it's interesting and, and, um, but I was gonna kind of cross that bridge when we got there to see if it was even anywhere close. Because it could just, could just solve the problem for us and it may not be feasible at all. So, but, and I think it's a, you know, you have to weigh the cost with the benefit at that time and go from there. I, I think that, of all things, like looking for, uh, you know, the sidewalk connectivity to get around that corner seems great. Um, I would say with the lighting money, I, I, I would like to see us, uh, you know, um, the, you know, savings on, on lighting. I, I'd like us to see, uh, formulating plan to capture the remaining, uh, lights in the city that, that, that for whatever reason we're not captured. I, I know we, we had a conversation early on about that, but I, I haven't heard, uh, additional information about, uh, if there is a plan to.
We're starting to get a little off-topic here. I want to keep us to our agenda items.
Well, we was talking, Pete, uh, Mr. Lenishewski indicated where funds could come in the event that this was funded in addition to the $200,000 grant. So, I'm specifying my, you know, not.
We, we can certainly have that discussion during the.
But to address, uh, Ms. Downing's, uh, concerns, I would say that, um, my mind is in the place of getting the sidewalk improvements in place. And, uh, the cross the bridge of cost increase beyond the, the grant to fund those at that time. So, with that, I will yield the floor.
All right. I'm gonna move on to the updated cost estimate. Is that okay? Let's see if I can just drag my screen over there. Oh, did that seamlessly transition? You can't see the table? Oh, boo. All right, let me reshare. I guess I couldn't trick it, so now you can see the table. Uh, so, there's two pages to this. It's broken out in a couple of different categories. So, demolition, you know, we're expecting a 26,000. Paving, you know, curb gutter, sidewalk, asphalt repairs, um, ADA crosswalk ramps, all that. That'll be a $95,000 part. And then the landscape features are 30. So, you get a, you know, 152 currently. Um, add in some expected minor changes, put in some traffic control, contingency and tax, and, you know, you're at, you're right at 200. Um, we have things within our control, kind of like we talked about over the summer with Batten Road. We're interested in closing the whole road. You know, we can get the Miller's Homestead folks out of Miller's Homestead two different ways. We can get them through Arborwood, which isn't gonna make anybody happy. But again, saving city dollars to invest in projects rather than, um, you know, kind of some control measures are something we, we can certainly consider at that time. Um, so that's kind of the numbers on the front page, fairly straightforward, all the landscape. And I think the question, uh, I don't remember who asked it now, on landscape, it might have been Jennifer, on irrigation. Uh, it was not intended to irrigate this. We would do, uh, treed water bags to get the trees established if we could and go from there. So, then second page, the bid alternates. I can zoom on them just a little since there's less on the page. So, a rapid flashing beacon, which is the, um, button, crosswalk, flashing orange, uh, illuminated intersection area like we have on Third Avenue now in the Toll Brothers project. That's solar powered, that is expected to be in the $12,000 range. Um, the activity area itself, along with the equipment, is looking at 10 and a half. And then conduit work, which is bringing the conduits underground with our project, would be 9,000. We would also have to have a contract with PSC to put the poles up. We've looked into that number, that is currently estimated right now at an additional 11,000. So, lighting would be more along the lines of 20. And then each of these other two are at, you know, 10 and 12,000, currently estimated in the, in the project. Questions? I don't, I gotta stop sharing to see the hands. Uh, Jennifer's hand, okay.
Councilmember Napland.
I forgot to lower my hands, but thank you very much for that information.
Okay.
So, um, you know, I'll, I'll just put out my recommendation. Um, it's usually more cost-effective to do this additional work when you have the opportunity. Um, and as was when we originally started this project, um, my recommendation is to move forward with that additional work and get it all done at once and then work on the sidewalk, um, the further fight sidewalk funding down the line. But we do have to wait for the bids to come back and, um, then we can make a final decision. Did anybody else have any other questions? Uh, Mayor Pretem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, uh, PSC didn't volunteer to put all the power lines underground?
They did not. So, no. Am I muted? Yeah, believe it or not, they do like their lines above ground. Um, so, we usually get a 60-40 split on a Schedule 74 contract, so we might get a little reduction on what we do with them. But for the most part, yeah, no, they don't. They would prefer it above ground. They can see it and fix it much easier above ground than they can below ground.
I, I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
But it sure eliminates power going out when you don't have trees and.
Absolutely.
Cars hitting poles and.
Right, this is a treed corridor too. So, uh, and next steps, uh, you know, I know where we are. We have a contract with the state, we're, we're ready to move forward to bidding. Uh, I think our goal is to bid it in May so we can open, uh, late May and then hopefully be out of the stay-home, you know, stay-safe order for at least construction and, and move forward, um, to the best of our abilities. And hopefully receive a great estimate. And like, you know, Councilmember Iyer said, you know, we'll, we'll know what bridge we want to cross when we get there because we'll have numbers to do that then. So, I am hopeful on everything, uh, being at or below budget and getting everything for the state's nickel if we can.
Thank you, Steve. Did anybody else have any final questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, report from administration, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor and council, I'll be, uh, really quick. Um, it's kind of just an overall report. Our telecommuting is continuing to do well. Our departments are having team meetings to check in on a regular basis. We get weekly progress reports, um, from anybody that's doing work, uh, through telecommuting. And we report back weekly to the mayor, so that's continuing to go really well. Um, I did want to let council know that, uh, we will be looking at seeing more construction out in the field on our projects for spoliation, um, people that potentially will be homeless if their house doesn't close. Um, and then some, um, kind of emergency-type repairs and public safety-type issues. So, that was really, uh, it on administration. I wanted to make it pretty quick, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Thank you, Laura. And I'm not seeing any questions, so we will go ahead and move on. Uh, we do not have a presentation this evening, and of course, we do not have a public hearing. So, we'll move on to new business or unfinished business. Agenda Bill 20-28, Public Works Engineering Building Roof Replacement for Discussion and/or Decision. Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and those still on the phone. Uh, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, sorry I did not introduce myself earlier. Um, as we've been tasked with trying to run through improvements on city buildings, um, you know, starting to, to get the ball moving is, is what we're working on. So, we had a roof quote put out for the structure I manned at the treatment plant, which houses engineering and the building department or bits and pieces thereof. And we put it out to eight contractors through, uh, MRSC list, and we received one bid. Um, the number that was provided was included in the packet at 2, $23,990 plus tax at 8.8% of an additional 21, 1.12 for a total project of $26,101.12. Um, outside of that, I really don't have a whole lot to say. Couple of questions that I was asked today, you know, is a reasonable, uh, I can compare it to residential. Um, my own quote for a roof is 17,000 personally. Uh, and we're under the no, the stay-home order, so we're not getting our roof done yet. But nonetheless, that's the, the most realistic, reasonable, recent number I have had. It's residential base. I had a handful of quotes, um, you know, issued at my own home. So, uh, it's commercial, it's a little higher, it's a little bigger. But again, we have a couple of, uh, stormers up on the front, so there is a little bit of, of modulation that we must keep, because I was trying to get rid of that, but it needs to stay within the confines of the code to the best of its abilities. So, modulation and, uh, roofline manipulation is required. Uh, so we did try to minimize to the best of our abilities, but that's the number that's provided. I really have nothing else to report.
Great. Um, do any councilmembers have any questions, feedback? Um, if you're ready to move forward, you're welcome to suspend your rules. Uh, Councilmember Hoag.
So, this is the one agenda bill that kind of got me thinking about, um, I guess requesting a meeting where the council can have a discussion about our priorities. Because we haven't looked at this, well, we talked about it at the retreat in February. And this was before the virus had, yet, right? So, is this still a priority? It sounds like the roof is old for sure, but there's no leak, there's no active leak. Is this something that can be put on hold? I think we need to look at every project and everything going out the door in those, in, under the lens of this new, you know, COVID-19. So, that's just, that's just my thought.
Yeah, it, it may have had some active leaks, just FYI. There's nothing wet now because we're dry, but there's bubbles in some spots here and there and some, some drips of previous, but it doesn't look to be active. But again, it's an original roof, you know, all we were tasked with was moving forward. So, I think the group certainly gets to speak their piece, and, uh, I think Dot has a.
Councilmember Langwell.
I, my little blue hand doesn't show, I understand.
I got it up now.
Yeah, you've got it. Uh, okay, um, actually, I feel it's this agenda bill, but also the next one, I, I I'm trying to think of a way to say this. Each is, we are at a point right now that, um, some of us have experienced. And we have to start somewhere with pa, with some pauses. And I, you know, we only got one bid on this, so it's not, you know, over the, over the realm of reasonableness to say we could pause on this one. Um, if I was making a decision today, knowing about the COVID, would I spend money on doing this new roof versus like doing a patch if we have a leak versus installing a barrier at City Hall so that employees could safely come back to work? I would do the latter, not the former. And I think we'll see a lot of these very small projects, that it's not a question of whether they're not valuable or we'd like to do them, but we are at a place that we will have to start making some of these incremental decisions. Because we will not be able to preserve jobs if we don't start making some incremental decisions. And, um, so I'll just leave it there. But I think Councilmember Hoag is right. You know, we, we need to figure out a time to start looking at things we thought were priorities, and are they same priorities now? And the mayor has, has touch on this. If you start looking at the different press releases, all the other municipal entities are going back, they're looking at their projects and they're reprioritizing. So, we're just gonna have to do it too. And, um, you know, maybe the roof has to wait a little longer. Um, I'll just, I'll send there.
Councilmember Bett Nikki, and I do have some feedback to add to that as well.
Um, I guess I just have a question because we had to redo our roof. And, um, I, I just need to understand like what, what the impact is to wait. Uh, because we all know that if you don't, if you don't deal with a roof leak or damage that can go into the internals of your walls and stuff, you could have a much larger problem. So, I just want to make sure what is, uh, what is the, I guess, amount of need based on how, uh, it's a really old roof? Are you seeing something going into the structure, that sort of thing?
Yeah, there, there were some previous leaks, whether they were kind of ice-dammed from a, from a specific event or, or what, we can't quite tell. They're, they didn't seem to be active when it was looked at recently. So, uh, in all fairness, I don't know. It's a 20-year life, 25-year roof on a building that was built in the 80s. So, it's certainly due, again, council want to start moving forward and if they want to reprioritize, that's certainly within their, their druthers. But it's a great idea to do these kinds of jobs in the summer rather than waiting for the wet season and having the building open and whatnot. So, um, again, I can't do anything. If, if we're not interested, I would again, um, always need a, would prefer a motion to, you know, reject. That way I can reject any and all bids, and that'll have somebody waiting for something that may or may not happen. And we also have timelines that sunset on these contracts. So, I'm sure legal wants to make sure we're, we're honoring the timelines we've set forward in these bid openings. So, usually 60 days to notice, uh, intent to proceed, so.
Councilmember Bett Nikki.
So, um, because we, we approved 30,000 or what was it, 2030, I lose track, for human services and things for the emergency needs of the community. And to me, if, if we go into another storm season and there's heavy snow or rain or whatever have you, um, I think the bid that came in is definitely, well, it was lower than my own home eight years ago. So, I, I feel comfortable with supporting the roof.
And I, I just want to add, um, you know, this is part of the deferred maintenance um, that I begged council to fund in our biennial, biennial budget. This is something that's needed to be done for more than the last three years. Um, as Mr. Lenishewski just pointed out, this was something, um, building that was built in the 1980s for a 25-year roof. We're approaching pro, if you looked at 1980 to now, that's 40 years. Um, and, uh, I have to tell you, before we had our building inspections, I had a building inspector come up to me in a grocery store and say, when are you gonna replace that roof? That roof needs to be done. And that was three years ago. Um, so, yes, we have COVID-related issues. That said, these are not things that we can really afford to defer any longer. And if you have a bigger leak in those buildings, you might have a lot more damage than just replacing a roof. You might have documents destroyed and, and, um, computers destroyed. And this is a routine part of doing business that we cannot afford to continue to put off. Um, and that was the whole purpose of part of putting deferred maintenance into the biennial budget. And this is part of that process that council agreed just a couple of months ago to release that funding and move forward with some of those projects. I think it would be completely irresponsible of me as an employer. I think it would be completely irresponsible of me as an employer and an elected official to let our, our infrastructure continue to deteriorate when that money is there and providing the safe space for employees. What happens if it gets moldy? There's lots of other things that can occur if we don't get this work done. This isn't a boisterous ask. This is routine core infrastructure maintenance. And we all know that if we don't maintain our infrastructure, it costs more down the line. And if we kick this project down the line, it will cost more, and we might have some bigger issues as a result. So I just wanted to share my perspective on this. And, you know, we, we have to be cautious because of COVID, but we cannot stop doing business. And revenue will continue to come in, and we have to have safe places that are up to building standards for our employees to work out of. Anything else is not acceptable.
Councilmember Hoag and then Councilmember Lingle.
So this agenda bill.
Michelle, you're muted.
This agenda bill is, has been brought forward for information only. It is not brought forward for a decision, so I would prefer to wait on this. It's, that's what, that's how you proposed the agenda bill was for information only.
Yeah, that's correct. I was out last week. Staff put the paperwork together in anticipation of a free touch. You all know my stance on free touches. It's budgeted, it's routine. I don't believe it needs it, but that's all your choice. So it's, you're absolutely correct. Council can always make a motion to change otherwise, but if it's the way we go, we just put it on the next meeting and go from there.
One more quick question then. Is, what is, you mentioned there was 60 days. What is the, what is the 60-day timeline from the, for the bid? That you had 60 days on the bid?
Right. I can double check. Believe it was submitted the first week of April here, but I can email you guys that now.
Okay.
We, I think we certainly have time. We're not within, we're not even past 15, so.
Thank you. Lingle and then Mayor Per Tim Remington.
May I?
Councilmember Lingle had a comment, and then Mayor Per Tim Remington.
Steve, refresh my memory. I recall you threw out a number one time of what a typical hourly, hourly rate is for a public works employee with benefits. What's the freight on that? Just give me a, give me a number. You did it not long ago when you were telling me about how much it costs to maintain a trail.
So we, the number you put in our budget for this year in our fee and rate table, public works crew time is 115 an hour.
Okay. So here's the way I'm going to look at every single item like this. I'm going to look at the dollar amount we're talking about, whether it is absolutely critical, and how many hours of personnel time we place at risk. And I've been in construction my entire career. You can patch a roof if you have to. And you can patch a roof in August, you can patch a roof in September, my goodness, you can patch a roof in the winter. But we cannot afford to be in August and looking at a concern of laying off employees. So this is why I am very firm in believing we have got to look at every one of these decisions much more carefully now. We cannot afford to lose employees, and we could be in that situation. We just don't know what's going to happen with the revenue. Yes, there'll be revenue, but will it be enough? And it's hard. I get it, it's hard, but that's the way I'm going to look at every one of these decisions. I do not want to see us lose one employee over the next two years.
Councilmember Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate hearing from my fellow council members. I think there's a help show the concern we have in terms of budgeting and impacts, economic and revenue impacts from COVID-19, especially in light of some of our additional expenditures. One thing I'm proud of us as a city leadership, as well as council, is planning ahead. Part of that is planning for roof replacement, planning for maintaining. And in the past, I don't think we've done a great job of setting money aside. It's too easy to say, let's postpone it. I think the mayor made a good point. You know, we've been deferring a lot of our maintenance for a long time. Steve, I would recommend that we continue to look at this. I think maintaining our buildings is really critical, especially roof structures. Any of us have a leak in our house, we know that that's just a huge thing. And I think every citizen appreciates that too. And our workers appreciate it when we maintain our facilities and show, you know, that's part of our care for them. In terms of, you know, the monies, it looks like we've set it aside. But I want to underline the point that fellow council members are making. You know, there's a lot of unknown here. And so I think just proceeding with caution, we don't want to just throw it all out. But I think Councilmember Hoag made a good point. You know, we do need to put on our new lens as we take a look at things. We appreciate your patience with us. I think that, well, no more in a month and no more in two months. And my, even with the timelines, I hope we can move forward with the roof repair. We certainly want to be sensitive to other construction projects that have to stop in our region, and, you know, we move forward. So part of that is just recognizing the framework we're working in today. So I hope you're patient with us while we look at these things, and hopefully we can get that roof repaired in due time. But in the meantime, we really are expressing that concern for our stability budget-wise.
Let me be clear, we look at all of that stuff, but before we bring anything forward, these are things that we're thinking about every single day. Amy McHenry, Councilmember McHenry, have your hand up, and then Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is something, you guys bring up really great points, and I don't disagree. I think this is really important, and it's a part of what was budgeted for. It's roughly a third of that amount. That being said, I mean, we still have some time, and I think we had been throwing around using the next cow as an opportunity to really talk about this. So it just feels like the timing's right to go to the next meeting and have that conversation. Hopefully by that meeting, perhaps we have an idea of whether or not the majority of council is ready to move forward with it.
Member Hoag.
So the only other thought I had, and I guess you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we've told people that they cannot work on homes, how can we be putting a new roof on today if the builders can't be putting a new roof on today, if there's no active leak? Do you see my point? Can you really do that? Can you really put a new roof on the structure when all the builders are sitting there on hold?
So things like roof replacements, and my understanding so far are considered necessity. That said, approving a roof replacement simply means that it happens when that construction opens up again, and that we don't have to wait another month or two to make that decision. Ms. Thomas can probably interject a bit more on some of those construction standards and spoilage and what have you. So Laura, with that, please fill in.
In general, government, I don't know, maybe doesn't, maybe people don't want to hear this, but government is exempt from that governor's order. So I just wanted to say that we have had previous issues with the roof. We don't have any current issues with the roof. But it would be, it would probably be right about the time that the governor starts to dial back and starting to allow construction to happen again. Thank you.
Councilmember Brad Nicky.
So if we're going to discuss this further in another meeting, what I really need to know, I still support putting a roof on because it has been deferred for such a long time. And in the past, watching what happens when municipalities do that kind of thing, and the repercussions of it is something that I want to make sure that the environment is safe and that we don't have a bigger issue when storms come in. So in the next meeting, when we discuss this item, I would really like to know if there's going to be an issue if we defer again for another year, however long. Because that's important. That's the thing I'm going to base my judgment on. And right now, I'm currently in support of moving forward with it.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak to this issue? Okay, so moving on to Agenda Bill 20-29, wastewater treatment plant reuse water pump skid replacement project. Mr. Lenishewski.
Okay, very exciting stuff here. So I believe in the staff report, there was a little image, if everybody recalls, in the lower building at the treatment plant, we have a, we call the reuse pump skid. This is a pump network that moves water throughout our facility that utilizes the existing water that we create, which is secondary reuse water. It's not for drinking, but nonetheless, it is technically reclaimed water, purple pipe in some areas. The pump network is shot. It's limping along now, so we are trying to, we put a bid package together with parametrics to get this replaced. It includes new controls, new pumps, demo the existing, and rebuilding and reconstruction. The one side note, we are working on a small contract to, this is in the lower story of a concrete structure with an opening that is no wider than 32 inches, cut in the floor with the staircase down, so it's very difficult to access. We're working on a crane system. We have a building permit in right now, the building department, to get that approved, to hopefully be installed prior to the issuance of this. But this saves us money in lieu of this machine pumping recirculated, cleaned effluent through the site to use 24/7. It's part of our wash water. It's part of our band screen. It's part of the screening process, part of other hoses in the site that we use. When this went down, we were spending about 2G's a month in water just to wash the site. So we were taking, you know, good water out of the system, drinking water, and using it for process operations. So I know I was asked the question, you know, what's the return on our investment? And I believe the number I stated last time was about a three-year period, so it's kind of money easily decided upon in that respect. And it's recycling, so it's, you know, it's efficient, and it's sustainable, and it's, you know, a responsible approach through using our reuse water. We did get bids that I believe were in the packet. Let's scroll through those. So we have vetted out triangle pump and equipment, and they have been vetted as a responsible low bidder. And staff and our consultant are ready to move forward as soon as council is comfortable. And this comes from the 402 fund, and the 402 fund per our finance directors, when did she send an update through 415, April 15? It's, there's budgeted lines. We're not asking for additional. We would use budgeted lines under the 402 Operations Sewer Fund. And for those interested, we are trending ahead of schedule in our revenue relative to sewer operations, and our expenses are tracking at or well below expenditure expected. So those are all things we do look at on a consistent basis. And at this point, you know, we are ready to do this and get it done as soon as possible and practical, because we're, we don't want to use purchased water if we don't have to. And the treatment plant is operating from its inception at 04 for the bulk of it, but there are other pieces that are operating well beyond that when they were originally constructed. So there is a lot of repairs to do at the plant, and we will be coming forward to it. The CIP, as I think Councilmember Iyer talked about last time, we talked about sewer FTEs, so that's, that is in process. This is something that we need to have done, and I don't believe waiting on this has any merits. There's millions of dollars in the sewer fund operationally, whether it's reserved or ending fund balance, not allocated. So to Councilmember Lingle's point, we can go a long ways on wages with what's available in the ending fund balance of the sewer operations fund if we have to. That's my spiel.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I'm not seeing any. So is council okay with?
I had a question.
Mayor Per Tim Remington, please.
Thank you. Steve, this is a top priority for you?
It is a priority. It's, again, it saves us time and money in the long run. So getting it up and running is certainly something we should be doing.
And we don't have a backup pump for this, so then we just.
No, we're discharging, when we can't use, we discharge to the river and buy water from the city, so.
Yeah, I haven't overseen a water system. When you don't have a backup and the pump's going down and you're spending additional money you don't need to spend, it's just, it's just frustrating to watch that money wash away. This is one of those items that, you know, is part of doing business, and I feel comfortable moving forward right now. Getting that done and moving it on, especially since we have a, you know, healthy fund balance in there, and it's part of doing business.
Thank you, Mayor Per Tim Remington. Councilmember Iyer, you had your hand up.
We need to formally suspend the rules to move this forward. Jody, Clark?
I put it in the agenda bill. We've talked about it multiple times. If you wanted to argue the semantics, probably not, but I did put it in there just because it's been a while.
Yeah, I guess it was more of a process question in terms of, because I think generally council policy is that we do three touches, but.
You're welcome to suspend if that's what you would like to do.
I'm asking if it's formally required of the clerk.
Your procedures don't really say that it has to be formally suspended. That, so that could be your call if you want to take a vote to suspend the rules.
Okay, I would move that we suspend the rules. So I just want to get a vote on that, seeing as we just had a long conversation about the last one. So on this one, I'd be comfortable suspending the rules and suspending our policy and moving forward with this. And then after that, I can make a motion if everyone else is comfortable.
So I would just ask if anyone objects to that, being that this is difficult to take some of those votes. Are there any objections? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none, then Councilmember Iyer, if you'd like to make a motion, I'd be happy to enter. Oh, Ms. Soto.
Oh, just for clarification, when you're moving to suspend rules, you do actually need to take a vote. So it would be better to have the council all vote, and it needs to be a majority of the council.
All right, perfect. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, Councilmember Iyer, would you like to make a motion?
Move that we approve Agenda Bill 20-29A for the wastewater treatment plant reuse water pump skid replacement.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Iyer, a second by Councilmember McHenry. Any further discussion?
Just a brief question, Mayor.
Yes.
So Steve, I'm looking at those bids. There's a $100,000 difference, you know. I always like to go with the lowest responsible bidder. What's the difference? Why $100,000 on this replacement?
Good question. What we've ascertained on this is this fella in group normally is the manufacturer and supplier to others who install. But I think as times are, they're more than happy to do the install work at their cost just to keep some, some activity going, it appears. So they're, they're known around here for more, more long lines of selling the pumps and the racks and the pieces and the parts, not necessarily putting them together, but they have done that less than they've sold. But again, they're, they're in the business, so I think that's part of their, get a little money, keep themselves busy and working and, and, you know, keep it going. Because they have, if they're going to mark up their pumps when they sell them to these other, you know, providers, they can keep the markup and do something for a low cost to keep themselves busy right now. We did ask the same question because they were significantly lower than the rest. And, and again, they usually supply the pumps to these other reps, so.
Great. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. We have no objections, so it passes unanimously. You went mute again, Mayor. It keeps doing that. I swear to goodness. I, it's doing it automatically at times. I don't know what's going on. So we do, the motion passes. And we will move on to Agenda Bill 20-30, Resolution Be Scheduled for Summer Camps at Big Rock.
We're going to roll here. So, good evening again, council. We brought forward some discussion on behalf of some user groups to use and rent Big Rock ballfields during the day in the summers for programmatic purposes, camps and whatnot. We had a good discussion. Council had a couple of questions, and the follow-up questions that we were requested to ask is, can they offer a reduced rate to citizens of Duval, and then can they offer a low income rate? So the two groups who we have had interest from said they could. So that is wrapped into this. We're not exactly sure what those reductions are, but they said they would do that, and they had some of those built in already. Not necessarily for Duval, but into their programming in general. So we brought this forward, and the only item I suggested we change is based on COVID and the fact that we may or may not be able to rent the space on that ballfield this summer, that we just extend this pilot program instead of through December 31, 2020, through December 31, 2021, just to get us this summer maybe, and then next summer hopefully for sure. That was the only difference, other than vetting out those questions you had asked as a group. That's it. It's been touched several times, and I think it's ripe for any motion at this point.
Councilmember Lengel, and then Councilmember Britt Nikki.
I think it makes total sense to extend it for another year. And I mentioned this to Steve a while ago when he first brought up extending it. So I would, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this if somebody wants to second. We have talked about it. We have looked at it a bunch of different times, so I'm pretty happy moving forward.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Diane, did you have your hand up for discussion?
No.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this?
I had my hand up. You can't see it.
Okay. Councilmember Napland?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that you worked in a discount for citizens of Duval. I, you know, we're still paying for this out of our property taxes every year, and it's a big investment. And more utilization brings in, you know, the revenue that needs to come in to set aside for the turf replacements. So the more we can get usage, I think just having people using it during the summer, there's a security aspect of having more people on site. So anyway, thank you so much, Steve. This is great.
No problem. It was your guys' question, so.
Any further discussion? Ms. Soto?
Just for record-keeping purposes, since we're using Zoom and it's a little bit more difficult than when we're all in person, it would probably be better to do roll call votes moving forward. I know that they take a little bit more time, but it's probably just a better way to keep track of who's voting in what way.
Okay, we have been doing that on split votes, but happy to do it for every vote. That's fine. Thank you. All right, all those, so we'll do a roll call vote, all those with the clerk reading off the roll.
Councilmember Britt Nikki?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Bill AB 20-31, An Ardentance for Parking and Impound Regulation Update. And this will be led by Chief Hurt. Hopefully, he's ready. Are you there, chief?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, Kerry Hurt, Police Chief. At this time, I wanted to introduce Agenda Bill 20-31 Regarding Parking Regulations. This is a first touch, and it is being recommended that council adopt this ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 708 of the Municipal Code to update the parking regulations and vehicle impound regulations. Included in your packet is the draft ordinance as well as the current version of the Duval Municipal Code. I've been working exclusively with our city attorney's office to draft an ordinance that is both up to date as well as in best current practices. The current code is beyond 30 years old, and it's time for updating some of the key facts and findings as identified in your paperwork. The city has not adopted an ordinance prohibiting, limiting, prohibiting or limiting parking on city streets for the RCWs. And law enforcement has the authority to have vehicles impounded if they are on the highway and tagged for over 24 hours. But this only applies to highways, not city streets. The next key fact is DMC 46.55.010 only prohibits parking on public property if, one, it constitutes a traffic hazard as defined in the RCW. It's on a highway. It's in a publicly owned or controlled parking facility that is properly posted under the RCW. This, this part of the code was originally written to comply with RCW 4655240, but is old and outdated, and it has been amended several times since. This has caused enforcement issues recently. We had an issue with a recreational vehicle that was parked near the Duval Highlands Mobile Home Park that police spent almost a month on trying to remove. It was in, parked outside the gate, and it was actually preventing Public Works from accessing areas of their workspace. Most recently, it actually, there was some human waste that started showing up around this recreational vehicle. We struggled with our current code to get this vehicle removed. We have several steps we have to take. We have to identify the last registered owner. We struggled with that for almost two weeks. We actually were able to identify this person and get contact through a third party and had a conversation with this person to notify them that they needed to remove the vehicle. They agreed to do so at the time, but the time elapsed and they didn't remove it. We reached out to several tow companies that refused to take the vehicle because of the costs involved and the space it takes up in their facilities. So we struggled. We struggled a lot until about 10 days ago, where we actually made contact with this person again in our city and arrested him on a warrant. And through that process, we're able to get him to remove the vehicle. So we're looking at changing this code, bringing it current, allowing better enforcement opportunities, and trying to move forward as best as we can. Well, I'm certainly not looking for this to, for you guys to rush this piece of code through. I do appreciate any and all questions and concerns you have. I can assure you, this has brought several things to light for me as a police chief. And as myself and our, while myself and our police administrators continue to telecommute, we will be looking a lot of these code issues that involve public safety. So with that, I would entertain any questions or concerns that any of you have.
Councilmember McHenry, and then Mayor Protim Remington.
Thank you. I think the main question that I would imagine a lot of citizens would want to know is, what will change after this happens? So I would assume that we wouldn't see police going and tagging a ton of vehicles. This is more, I'm, can I assume that this is more based off of calls and those specific scenarios that brought this to light that, you know, got you guys to work on this?
Yes, thank you. That's correct. We don't actively go out and try to create financial hardship for our community. We do respond to calls that we receive regarding parking problems. But the change in the code would allow us to better enforce and quicker enforce the actual concerns of the citizens. We certainly, we certainly don't want to create financial burdens on folks. And a lot of the times when we're dealing with these vehicles, they don't even live in our community. They've shown up, they've broken down, they're indigent. We're absolutely going to work with these people. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that the citizens would really appreciate this legislation.
Mayor Protim Remington, and then Councilmember Iyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm just following up a little bit on that same question because there's a lot of cars parked on our street, and it seems like it's appropriate. We've allowed for new, smaller homes that don't have any parking on their property. So if you really need to park on the street, and I get the fact that you're not going out, you know, and just tagging everybody that's parked on the street. So I'm just, I really like the language. The RCW has changed. It makes total sense for us to give you that authority, and I'm ready to move forward on that now. But I just, I do see that conflict. If we have part of our existing code that says you can't park longer than 24 hours, and there are hundreds of cars in this city parked on city streets out of necessity, how do we, how should we try to work that out so we don't create more conflict? Or appear to create a new code that we already know we're not going to enforce majority of the time?
So I guess I would say this, that we have been working with Public Works, with Director Lenishewski. We have identified a few areas in town that probably do need additional signage. There's concerns of smaller streets where, when vehicles are parked on the side of the street, there's concerns for whether or not fire trucks can even get to a home. I think working with Public Works, we're going to have to identify those areas more frequently and put signage up. RCWs allow us to sign these streets, and we just have to do a better job. We're all busy and we're all learning. I don't know what else I can tell you, Mayor Protim.
No, I get that. It makes sense. I, well, you get frustrated in some towns when I drive through, and it seems like every 50 feet, they have a no parking sign, and it just looks horrendous, to be honest. But I, I really trust, our police do such a good job of working with the community. I don't think we're unduly creating an issue. I just, I hate creating a rule when I know that there's an immediate conflict. But overriding that is this real importance for the police to have the authority to be able to move forward when someone's really parked. And you gave the perfect example. They're actually interfering with city operations, and that's just inappropriate, and we ought to be able to tell them immediately. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Iyer, and then Councilmember Lengel.
I just want to, Councilmember Britt Nikki was waving her hand right about the same time I was, so. But my comment would would be, I got two, one question and a comment. So would this go to public hearing, or this require a public hearing? No?
No, does not require a public hearing. And this is, this is one of those issues as well that was supposed to be on the agenda for the last meeting. We did not consider it routine and necessary until we got to the point of needing to remove the vehicle and recognizing that this is likely to occur more often throughout the next several months.
Yeah, and so, so thank you for that information. My, my comment would be to kind of reflect Councilmember Remington's thoughts. Last, last weekend, I went, we took a road trip to get Krispy Kreme, and we drove through some Amish, some of my old neighborhoods, and I was going through Kalahani. I was astounded by how much, there was areas where there was all this street parking just on the main road going through town, just off of the apartments and townhomes that were in there. And to that point that it's going to be interesting that when these, a lot of these townhomes are built in terms of the capacity for parking, and parking is going to be not only at a premium, but also it's going to be a very contentious issue. And it's going to make both the person who wants the car moved very mad and the person who doesn't want the car moved mad. And so, and then also, living downtown, where I live in a neighborhood that's more of a traditional city neighborhood where it's more common for folks to have their everyday parking spot be on a street corner. And, but I'm in, generally, I think this is a good move to to address nuisances. But I mean, I'm supportive in, like, I think letting it cook for a week and looking at it more in depth, see if we get so many, any public comments on it. Maybe try putting it out on, on, on Facebook. I know we do a good job of advertising, but sometimes people don't pay attention. But, but generally, I'm, I appreciate the need to make things make sense all the way back to the code, so you have something that you can lean on in the event that you need to. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, and I think all of our PIOs in the city do a really good job when, when rules and regulations change in our city to do the educational piece way up front and give people the leniency and the notice. I think they do a really good job, and this will be no, no, this will be no different than that.
Yeah, I agree. Councilmember Britt Nikki?
I guess because in my area in the neighborhood, I know for certain there are people with two-car garages that are completely filled, and they have four cars, five cars, because they have active teenagers driving or in-laws living with them, but, you know, a lot of cars. So I think I'm trying to understand, maybe, does this work when, or shall we say that when these cars are all parked, because I see them all the time, would the, there wouldn't be really like a policeman showing up and saying, hey, your car's been out here how many ever weeks, or whatever. But it would be more a situation where maybe a neighbor or the community is complaining about that sort of issue. Is that, is that kind of how I see this working? And if they move the cars, is it that they can move the cars or in 24-hour periods? So they can always park, no grandma or teenage kid can park in front of their house, or is that not how that works? And the other thing I do have, is there, some people have the rideshare vans? So they have their cars parking in their driveways, but they can't put the van in there. So would that impact something like that as well?
So we do provide 24-hour parking notices, and actually, our code currently allows for that. It gives the owner 24 hours' notice that they need to move their car within 24 hours, or it is subject to being towed. Rarely do we ever have to come back after 24 hours into a car. I mean, we go out of our way. We will put the sticker on the car. If we have to go back 24 hours, it's still there. We'll take that extra step. We'll contact the registered owner. We'll say, hey, we tagged your car. It's been 24 hours. If you can't move it, let us know. If you're working on, if it's broke down and you're working on getting parts or whatever it is, just give us a timeframe. We work with them. We go out of our way to work with them. Because again, it's not about creating financial hardship for our community. It's just about responding to those complaints because we have to balance that. We have to respond to the complaints, but we also have to do the right thing for our community. And it is a tough balance at times. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, I just, I just, I think what I was understanding is that Yeah, that, I just, I just, I think what I was understanding is that your kid or whoever, that, you know, third or fourth car, whatever, that won't fit can park however, they just can't be there for a full 24 hours. So if they move the car and go somewhere, they're okay. That's, that's what I'm understanding, right?
It is, and it's frustrating at times for us as well because if they're not parked in a fire lane, blocking traffic or creating a public safety hazard, realistically, we can put a sticker on their car, 24-hour notice and mark their tire. And if we go back the next day and it's moved a foot, we have to put another 24-hour notice on. I mean, it can be a game. We just choose not to make it a game. We work with them and try to, try to do the best we can by everyone in the community.
Okay, thank you.
And quite honestly, if you want to get down to the financial piece of it, parking infractions are the only tickets that we write and fractions that we write that are 100% profit to the city of Duval. We don't pay anything. None of that goes to the state. It's 100% Duval, but we're not out there trying to make money on these things.
Councilmember Napland?
Hey, yeah, I mean, it's just along the same lines of other questions. The concern would be, like, let's take the example, Councilmember Brudniky, that, that family goes on vacation and some, some vehicles are left on the street because they just don't have enough room to park them, you know? And they go on vacation for a week and a feuding neighbor decides, hey, I know they're on vacation, I'm going to turn them in. You know, I mean, you worry a little bit that it could be used as a weapon between feuding neighbors. And I honestly, I trust our police force to, you know, handle that with discretion and, and sort that out. But, but it is a little bit of a concern. Just as Councilmember Iyer said, I, you know, a lot of these new developments we're building, there really isn't enough parking for the number of bedrooms and people who could potentially live in them. And I've seen another, I think it was a, you know, over in Muckeltoe that they had to start putting up signs on one side of the street for no parking because emergency vehicles couldn't get into the neighborhood because they, you know, for traffic calming, they'd made the streets real narrow, but also did not build enough garage space. So it just, it ended up becoming a really big problem. So I think we are going to have to be flexible as this gets implemented and potentially tweak it. But I, but I do like the idea of not just informing the public once this is enacted, kind of that educational component, but this might be something that could go out and just say, hey, we're talking about this before the decision is made, just to, just to make sure people know we're having this conversation and they might have some good feedback. So, thanks.
I agree. Point, point well taken.
Councilmember Iyer, you had your hand up. Did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Sorry, I'll be quick. My two questions were, is 24 hours a, I'll just ask the two questions real quick and then I'll stop. Is 24 hours a standard? Are there any other cities with like a 48-hour? I have no idea. And then the other thing, to the point of the narrow roads, I did, I was struck by the Duval Village or Duval, the one on the valley side of the road, how narrow those roads were, and I think they're public. And so that's going to be, that's going to be difficult to manage. But this, something like this would be helpful because it's going to be a safety necessity. But, big question, 24 hours, 48, is it?
No, 24 is actually standard by RCW. To answer your second, second part of that, you know, we've had officers that will, will drive through those narrow streets and there are clearly parking violations that we aren't addressing unless they're just blatantly parking in a way that is impeding the traffic and especially at night when everybody's at home, right? And they're parking on both sides of those streets. If they are blocking or officers feel that, that if, if a house caught on fire and a fire truck couldn't get down that street, they're going to put a sticker on their car and they're going to, they're going to contact them. They're going to do everything they can. They'll wake them up, move your car before we ever take enforcement action.
I think we're also fortunate that we have HOAs in the community that enforce that as well. I know my HOA, if you have a guest overnight and you're parking alongside the street, you're getting an email the next morning. So there's part of, part of that is also the community effort in acknowledging what's going on as well. Councilmember Lengel, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, the public safety thing about the narrow streets has always been something that's really bothered me. I've already talked to Chief Hurt about my support of this. But there's one thing that we haven't specifically talked about and I'll throw it out there. There's a big difference between somebody who's parking on a street over 24 hours and there's an inconvenience dynamic to it. You know, the, a situation where the officers can do their good community policing and resolve it. And there's a difference between those types of situations and situations where somebody is really being negligent in the way they park. Specifically, I can, a neighborhood near us where it very clearly marked, no parking on this side of the street is not uncommon to see people parking on that side of the street in off-type hours. There's no way a fire truck would be able to go through there. We are building much, much more urban developments. We're building hundreds of units of urban developments and narrow streets. So we are at a point of a very interesting transition. And the problem that I have, it's not really a problem with this because I love this ordinance change, but is, I really do think when we decide what the fee, the traffic citation fee is, that we should look at very serious public safety parking violations differently than an inconvenience parking violation. Because if somebody is blocking a hydrant and we can't find them or they're, you know, doing the narrow street thing where anyway, going anywhere close to a fire lane, those are very different infractions in my mind. And I know Chief Hurdle do the research and sort out my concern about that. But I just don't see those, those types of infractions as the same. You know, there, one is a life-threatening situation. And then along with that has to do with towing. Towing is a pain. It is a real pain. Once that car is up on a towing company's frame, they're not taking that off. No, 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 no. And the owner will be furious. They'll be fighting with the towing company. It becomes an administrative nightmare potentially. And so I just want to make sure that when something goes as far as an actual tow, that we have the ability within the fee structure, the fine structure, to make sure that that administrative hassle factor is somehow accommodated. It's in line with the ongoing theme of the last year or so of trying to do more cost recovery through fees that we quantify because it really can get very nasty around getting a car out of towing. They're going to come in there, they're going to be yelling at somebody. I mean, it's just, it can be, which is why it's good that we have community policing, right? We avoid that stuff. But just want to make sure those pricing points are addressed in the code change.
So just a couple of comments. Councilmember Lengel, yes, the short answer is yes. We can, we can impose different, different fee structure for different parking violations. If you want to write this down, there is, Washington State has established infraction rules for courts of limited jurisdiction. It's the IRLJ 6.2. If you Google it, it'll pull it up. And what you're going to find is the parking infractions and the penalties is very low, very low statewide. So the legal opinion that I have received is we need to make sure that we're maintaining this, a similar philosophy when we're creating our own fees. While we can do it, we do need to maintain a similar philosophy with the IRLJ. And then of course, you know, the next step, if council wants to move forward with creating a different fee structure that's, you know, outside of the norm for the rest of the, rest of the state is reaching out to the court administrator at Redmond District Court where we do our court to make sure there isn't something I need to do or we need to do to coordinate with them so, so their court clerks and everyone that works there knows what we're doing. So those are things I haven't done yet. I'm more than happy to do it if that's what the majority of council wants me to do. But I would encourage all of you to look at the IRLJ.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the public safety thing that really worries me. You know, people need to take that stuff seriously and, and the more urban we become, which is what's going to happen. You're not going to want to be changing your code every two years, right? That's not what you do. So I'm thinking more forward as well. And I guess I can look that up and see and it sounds like you're going to probably be looking at it as well. But it just seems to me that public safety parking violations are different than inconvenience.
You know, and I will comment one more time on the narrow streets and limited parking, you know, it creates a struggle for us because we can, we can drive through the communities at night on the, on these narrow streets and we can see cars parked on both sides where we don't confidently think maybe a fire truck can get down. And in the same situation in another part of town, we'll see a car that has parked on the sidewalk, two tires on the sidewalk. Do we ticket that, do we ticket that car because they're creating space for our emergency response vehicles? It's a, it's a tough balance. It really is.
Yeah. Well, hopefully a fire hydrant will be an easy one.
Fire hydrant for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Any further discussion on this issue right now? Okay, we'll go ahead. Oh, Councilmember Brudniky?
I just wanted to say thank you for working on this and providing us with all that information and I appreciate what you've done with this. So I'm a supporter.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, Agenda Bill 20-32, a resolution waiving temporary sign permit fees. And as a precursor to Ms. Thomas's presentation, this is part of what we've been discussing as far as our local small businesses that are having trouble keeping their businesses going and trying to find a simplistic way to relax some of our rules to allow them a little bit better advertisement opportunities. So with that, Ms. Thomas.
Are you muted, Laura?
Sorry about that. I was talking to myself. Good evening again, Mayor and Council, Laura Thomas from Community Development Department. I've been working with the mayor and obviously our emergency management director to look as we move forward into recovery. And one item that we thought would be helpful and beneficial to the business community would temporarily waive what are considered our temporary sign fees. So a temporary sign is like an A board, a banner, a feather banner. On average, a permit is about $44 for one of these items. And we thought somebody might want to put up a grand opening sign, you know, as they reopen. Or a nonprofit might want to put up a thank you note to whatever service industry to put that up. And so what I did is I did some research. I also worked with our attorney's office. And so I drafted a resolution that would allow us to waive fees through the end of this year. I did give you a draft resolution and then a couple of background documents, including our draft fee schedule, what a sample sign permit application looks like, a fee ticket, and then also provided a link to the sign code. And so this evening, we are hoping that we could potentially do this as a one-touch, but we don't have to. We could come back at the next meeting to have a discussion. Are there any questions related to this policy resolution?
Councilmember Napland has her hand up?
I just want to say that this is really proactive and I, I think it's a great idea. I just, I just think of all the posts on the discussion board. Was this open or is that restaurant open? I, I think especially as, you know, it's not going to be, everything's wide open. It's going to happen in phases. Maybe there'll be reduced hours. So just, you know, if certain businesses are able to open, just making sure they're able to get the word out. I, I just think it's really going to be necessary and hopefully help, you know, our local businesses. I don't know if you've heard from the chamber about, you know, I'm assuming that they, they, they're on board with this and think it's a great idea too.
It was mentioned to them, but, you know, I think they've been much more focused on getting their small business grants right now. And that's kind of an afterthought, but we're trying to be proactive in thinking of things that might be slightly beneficial to them that are within our control.
Just out of, just out of curiosity, have they asked for anything else in support of the businesses? I,
No. I, I've asked numerous times. The challenge with our city is since all we charge is business license fees, there's not much for us to do unless we can come up with funding for, for example, small business grant assistance. But the amount of money that we'd likely be able to come up with is probably not enough to significantly impact any of the businesses. So right now they're just very thankful for the connection to the city and the information sharing and working with the congressional offices and state legislative offices to make sure that their needs and their challenges are being addressed by the levels that have the most power over how their businesses succeed. So they've been absolutely fantastic. There are some just devastating stories and it breaks my heart to hear how much these folks are going through. And, you know, we're, we're just going to continue to find every little thing. It may be, may cost us more, more money than it, than it makes them. But the point is that we're going to do everything we can to help get them back on their feet. And I've asked for ideas too, and I'm just not getting anything from folks. And that might be just the sheer trauma side of it of trying to figure out how they're going to make it. And, and that's okay. We need to give them space. And when they come to us, or if we come to them with ideas, we'll, we'll do what we can to, to work those out for sure.
Councilmember Hoag?
Oh, a couple of times, the owner of Duval Vet had reached out to me about she had wanted, she was asking about putting a more permanent sign on 203, you know, saying vet this way. But I guess what my question is, I've been thinking about her because I believe that they're still open. I went on their website and I believe that they're still open. Is, does this include, could they put an A board or are they still restricted? They can't just put an A board down on 203, right? Or is it, does it have to stay on their property?
Technically, our policies have them put it within their, like their right-of-way or their street frontage, whatever that is. It has been a challenge and we've actually thought about looking at a program where a sign could be down in like districts and then an arrow with the name of the business up the hill. And we're hoping to put that into maybe some budget for economic development where we would put in the actual master kind of pole and then allow the businesses to buy the small directional piece signage.
Yeah. And that just, that's definitely something, you know, to Laura's point, we've been talking about internally and figure out how we would implement that and how we would make sure that, that the process impartial to businesses as well. But yes, that owner's talked to me about that as well. She talked to me about the sign waving. And one of the things we'll be looking for, or not sign waving, but the signage on the poles. And that's one of the things that we might have an option with the Port of Seattle grant. But there's a lot of priorities. So we're, we're continuing to evaluate and see what is going to get the most bang for the buck for our businesses and the community.
How will we get the information out?
So if we, if we do a program like that, we're going to have to bring it through council because there's going to have to be some standards to make sure we are not gifting of public funds and that they're going to have to, we can't just give away those things for free. So we would have
Actually referring to this temporary
Actually referring to this temporary sign, this agenda
We would go through the chamber. I'm in contact with Natalie usually about once a day when I see something come across your email that might be pertinent to the business community. And so it'll be pretty easy. Plus, we'll send it out. We could send it out even through social media, but definitely through the chamber and the Rotary.
Yeah, just like with the utility, anything that we're doing like that, we're going to be sending out through all the channels that we can identify to make sure that the more people are aware of what's going on and what options they have available. Okay, anything else on that one? Councilor, Mayor Purtemeington.
Mayor, I appreciate everybody's input. I'm ready to recommend that we suspend our three-touch rule and that City Council approve Agenda Bill 20-32, Resolution Waiving Temporary Sign Permit Fees.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we're doing real call. Clerk, please take the roll. Sorry, Emery.
Councilmember Britt Nikki.
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer.
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry.
Aye.
Councilmember Remington.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag.
Aye.
Councilmember Napland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on, we have two items left.
Is that just the vote to suspend the rules, though? We haven't actually voted on the resolution.
I believe Mayor Purtemeington, I heard it as suspending the rules and approving. I heard it as one sweep motion?
Yes.
Or we need to do one or two then?
You really need to do two. You need to do one to suspend the rules and then one to vote. Because the reason, just so that everyone knows, the reason for that is someone might be willing to suspend the rules to take a vote on the item tonight, but they want to vote it down. So their vote might not be the same for suspending the rules versus actually passing the item.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so now do we have a motion on the Agenda Bill?
So I'll move that we approve Agenda Bill AB 20-32, Resolution Waiving Temporary Sign Permit Fees.
Second.
All right, Mayor Purtemeington first and Councilmember McHenry second. And any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Britt Nikki.
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer.
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry.
Aye.
Councilmember Remington.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag.
Aye.
Councilmember Napland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel.
Aye.
The eyes have it, motion passes.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we have two more unfinished, or two more agenda items on the list tonight. Agenda Bill 20-33, Contract Amendment for Madrona Law, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This time I'm wearing my administrative hat. I've shared my screen with the Agenda Bill. This item is to approve Contract Amendment One with Madrona Law Group for Legal Services. I did send out some revisions to the Agenda Bill and the contract today. I was able to talk to a couple of council members related to that. But I'm going to walk through the agenda item in general. I wanted to let you know that we are working towards this amendment because it was a limited contract of $24,500. And so we are knocking on that door right now. And why we're doing that partially is because of the expenses that we have due to COVID and working on some policy work. And then also other general business, like when we need to ask questions about, like say, in the construction industry and walking through what we would do and even having the resolution for potentially tolling permits and also even for the resolution that allows us to waive our permit fees. So those are the types of things that we're incurring costs on as well that aren't part of normal operational business. We're also in the process of working on a new contract for city attorney services. And that will be coming forward at your first meeting in May. And so on the screen, you'll see that there's some purple italicized language, and that is the new language that I sent out today to council. We did update the numbers. So when you look at the non-departmental, how much was spent in 19, that remains the same. It was about $88,000. To date, which is of today, we've spent about $22,000 on attorney service contracts. And that's not just Madrona, but our other teams as well, whether it's Summit Law or Keating Buckley and McCormick. We have $140,000 budgeted for the biennium. And we're at about $111,000 of that $140,000. So we're starting to bump up towards that. And that's why you'll see in your budget amendments, you'll see an increased need to increase the dollars allocated to that. I also wanted to make sure that I parsed out a couple of the different agreements or contracts that we have with Madrona Law. So we had a small $7,500 contract that we entered into in December of 2019. To date, we've spent $3,864 on that. And that was up through February 5th, effective February 6th. The February 2020 Madrona contract became effective. And right now, we've spent about $15,735. And that was as of March 31st. So we'll be, we're getting towards the end of April now, and we'll be getting another invoice. And so that's why we were looking at needing to get this done fairly quickly so that we stayed within the scope of the contract and did not go over that. I'm going to now unshare this and then bring up the contract. So give me just a second. So thank you for your patience. Now, what I've done is I've brought up the Contract Amendment. It's pretty simple. We're asking for amendment change of $15,000. So that would put the total contract at $39,500. The items that I changed are in red. And what we did is looked at changes to make sure that we acknowledge the termination of the contract that we signed in December. And so that's what that does, as well as amend the contract to allow for the additional of $15,000 for a total of $39,500. So I didn't know if everybody got to look at that because it was sent out kind of mid-afternoon. But the red is what we added on, which is just the termination clause. And so I did highlight that in yellow for council, which basically specifically supersedes and terminates the prior agreement. So I am ready for council questions.
Councilmember Napland.
I didn't know I had my hand up. I didn't intend to.
Councilmember Hoag.
So I feel like there's another contract out there that was for land use.
Yes, that's correct. You're correct. And we, so the contract that was entered into in December terminated that contract.
Oh, that's, okay, I think you told me that. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions on this? I'm not seeing any. So this would be a one-touch and done. But Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, the little blue hand thing. Okay.
Screen, so I apologize.
No, it's unfortunate. What I don't understand is why would we amend this contract to go through the end of the year if we're going to see a recommendation come forward next in two weeks for a new attorney?
I can answer that. So we wanted to make sure there's coverage for long-term issues that are being worked on now. For example, the Wave Camp Cable Franchise Agreement. And so we just wanted to make sure there was coverage instead of having to start a new firm on those long-term issues that might have to linger longer instead of picking up with a new firm and paying a ton of money. The timeline is not a big deal to me. I can't remember who recommended the year-end. I would be fine with three months, but I think that was kind of the easy number that was thrown out. But the, you know, the gist of it is that we've got some work ongoing on some big issues that we want to make sure that are completed and don't have to change hands.
Well, to continue on that line, I mean, we know that we hire attorneys for different things. So, you know, we don't know what the outcome of the decision will be on a new attorney. So should that new firm not be Madrona, there's nothing that would preclude having a contract with them to finish up a special project. We do that with Summit. We do that. Correct. You wouldn't be using this contract because they wouldn't be a city attorney. It would be a, they would be an attorney for a specific project. And this, that's the difficulty with having a longer
It could work either way. It can work either way. It's a technicality that doesn't have a lot of impact.
Well, that's correct. It's just a bit different way of contracting. I think if we're bringing forward that at the first meeting in May, then this amendment could go through the end of May, possibly a little longer. I did a little bit of the math on the back of a napkin. And it seems like if you have, I looked at your invoices for, I think it was March, your standard, we know that, we know that there's been about $6,000, $7,000 worth of COVID-related work. And that certainly would not have been anticipated under your original scenario for this contract. So that definitely is something that has to be addressed in the math. And then there's the question of the month of April and the month of May. So when you start, I started making those adjustments, and I'm just using a range here because, you know, I don't know exactly what you've already got going in the month of April, whether it's been another, an extraordinary month or not. But it seemed to me then that what that would mean, only through the end of May, an adjustment on the amendment amount is somewhere between $5,000, $6,000 because of what you have left. Because right now, you have, what, about $16,000 suspended under the contract. So that would then, what does that do? I think that brings the new contract up somewhere around 30, 30, 32, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to eyeball it, like I said, back of the napkin. So what I would feel comfortable with is having a contract that goes through the end of May, understanding that if Madrona is not the firm that continues, that there will probably be special project work that they would continue. That makes total sense to me. I've talked about that before. And some amount for the amendment in the range of $5,000 to $6,000.
That works for me. Chief Hurt. Chief Hurt, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of things about this. You know, there are some things, human resources-wise, that I specifically and the police department are working on currently with Madrona that you're probably not privy to. And several of, several of these are disciplinary actions against officers. And they're not cheap. Not only they're not cheap, I'm not, I'm going to spend that money on an attorney rather than cause the city long-term financial consequences of a lawsuit. And I'm not going to take action without legal advice. So those things are happening outside of all of the COVID, outside of everything else. And I just want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Thomas, you have your hand up?
Yes, and so I would respectfully request that it extend through the end of June because if it's the end of May, it means I have to come back no later than the second meeting in May, which would be essentially the meeting after next if we ran into an issue. So I think that it, to me, it would work if it were the end of June. But the end of May means I'm bringing it right, right back if there's not a contract in place for new city attorney services.
Okay, Councilmember Hoag.
I'm still more comfortable having it expire if, once we've signed a new contract with a new city attorney because I think we could end up with a conflict. I'm, if there's a special project, fine, but if we're, I think, I don't think that it, I think that's kind of a conflict if we have two city attorneys. I think you're only supposed to have one, right? So there's no reason to continue this contract if we've hired, if we've signed a new contract with a new attorney, this should terminate.
I'll say something, and then Miss Soto has something to say. I'll be clear that the city uses multiple law firms as it is today.
So you're the city attorney.
It, that's a technicality. A city attorney can work on any number of issues. And in fact, we contract with a couple of other firms with specialties. So I don't see the contractual challenge there, but Miss Soto might have some, some feedback from her experience to provide.
Yeah, so if Madrona is not selected to be the city attorney moving forward, but the city still wants our firm to continue working on some special projects or some projects that are currently ongoing, then we can simply amend the contract to change the scope of work. So it won't say for interim city attorney services. And if the contract for now, you know, you have it saying that it's going to go through the end of the year, but let's say we're done with everything that we need to do by the end of June, we can just terminate the contract. There's nothing wrong with that. The contract has a 30-day termination clause. If you're not sending us work to do, we aren't billing you for any work. So there are ways that you can handle that situation. I think what the administration is trying to do is just have a backup plan just in case there is a need for us to continue doing work longer than is anticipated.
Councilmember Lengel.
If Laura thinks that she can make it work through the end of June, I'm fine with that. I guess the question for Laura is the amendment amount, my back of the napkin amendment amount would probably need to be a little bit more, though, the end of June, right? So for overlap purposes. I guess you could always like amend it again, but it seems kind of silly. So what I, what that would do is if it was, my original pricing was $5,500 to get through the end of May. So if you went up to the end of June, and I, I don't have you, where's your little spreadsheet? Oh, here, there's a something about
Doc, can I just interrupt for just a second? We, I made that calculation of an additional $15,000 because we're averaging right now between seven and nine a month. And we had a lot of work done in this month alone, plus some HR work. So I'm worried about even the $15,000 at this point. So I just wanted to share that with you. I don't think that we can necessarily use the previous ones because even the previous one only had about, I'll say, about two weeks of work that was related to COVID.
Yeah, well, I can't tell that, you know, on your spreadsheet, it just has March, so.
So I'm just giving you some
At that level, I can only see the month and the number of hours. And, oh, and it doesn't really, oh, yeah, it does. It says it's 29, 29 hours were COVID in the month of March.
Councilmember Britt Nikki.
So to me, we need to have coverage and we want to protect our cities. So I am fine with what the recommendation is from staff for the Contract Amendment. And what I've seen in the past is when we don't use up a certain amount of funding, And what I've seen in the past is when we don't use up a certain amount of funding, staff always comes back and we make, we make the changes that we have to make budget-wise. And they do save us money. And I've seen them do that for us before. So if we, you know, if we don't use the full amount that's requested, I'm sure it'll be readjusted in the budget anyways. And I would rather us have enough buffer to carry us through should we need that, considering that we have to do these meetings this way, we may not have as much flexibility. So it just seems a more prudent thing to do.
All right. Any further comments, questions? Okay. So Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm comfortable going through the end of June. It sounds like for both yourself, Mayor, and Laura, and even Anne Marie, that that would work. I'm fine with the amount in there. The concern I want to share is, you know, we have an ongoing process to get a city attorney. And I just don't want that delayed. Originally, we were going to see that tonight. And then it was moved, I think, to the first meeting of May. As long as we're confident we're going to bring it forward, the first meeting in May, I'm playing with this. You know, it gives us that flexibility, but we would need to amend it through the end of June rather than the end of the year. And, and if we have to come back, we can come back then.
Yeah. And I can guarantee we'll have the contract by the next meeting. And in fact, as soon as it's finalized, I'll be scheduling calls with individual councilmembers to go over the contract terms prior to the next meeting.
Do we need to make an amendment then through the end of June first? And then we can move forward with, or do we, do we?
So you'll need to suspend the three touches rule. And then a motion for the bill, and then an amendment, and then a vote on the underlying bill after the amendment.
Why don't we move then?
If I didn't get it right, please.
I was just going to ask, if we, if we provided the amended amendment to council prior to the meeting, and that's the one that they want to approve, do we have to do an amendment, like a motion to amend?
I think what the council is asking for is to amend the language that says that the contract goes through the end of the year and instead have it go through the end of June.
Okay.
I mean, what you can do with your motion is you can, ah, sorry, my, oh, that was because Laura was chanting. And I thought it was my screen just going wacky. What you could just do is after you move to suspend the rules, then you could make a motion to approve the contract amendment with the term of the contract ending on June, is it 30 days or 31? I can never remember. At the end of June of 2020, and then just vote that way.
So Mayor, I would go ahead and start this by admitting we suspend our three-touch rule on this and do a one-touch tonight. And then following that, I'll request an amendment for the end of June and then request that we approve the amended contract.
All right. Do we have a second?
I second on the suspension of the.
So Councilmember Iyer seconds with Mayor Protem first. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? Seeing none, Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Birdnicki? Aye. Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Langle?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion passes.
All right. So we have a motion on the original agenda bill prior to amendment.
So I move that we approve of the bill, AB 20-33, Contract Amendment, Madrona Law Group.
Iyer seconds that motion.
All right. Further discussion or amendment?
Mayor, I recommend that we amend the contract with Madrona Law Group to show that it would end on June, the, at the end of June, 2020.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Was that Councilmember Langle?
No, it's Birdnicki.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Hard to tell here. All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Birdnicki?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Langle?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on the, the agenda bill as amended? Seeing none, Clerk, please take the roll. For all those in favor?
Councilmember Birdnicki?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Langle?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. That will be very helpful as we move forward. So thank you, council. We have one item left on the agenda, and it's Agenda Bill 20-34, the 2020 Parks and Right-of-Way Maintenance Contract. Mr. Lenishewski?
Oh, good evening again, Mayor and Council and, um, citizens. You're Lenishewski Pub Works. Before we get into this item, I can't resist. Your PIOs made the news again tonight while we were sitting here. So on your screen was a King V video of the deer that wandered into the Pub Works yard this morning and was licking salt at the top of the salt and sand pile. It looks very majestic. It's hilarious. But nonetheless, sorry, very unprofessional, but I couldn't resist.
It's not unprofessional, Steve. It's part of small-town real life. Let's come on.
They made it to King V. Okay. So, good evening. What we have in the package tonight is a landscape maintenance bid summary. And I do not believe the bid summary was submitted during the packaging process, but was submitted after. So I will share the screen on what was received by the city. So we received three bids. Don't be confused with this center column says total landscape. That is not a total of anybody's work. The landscaper's name is Total Landscape. So the apparent low was $50,527.57. This is for an eight-month period between May 1 estimated and then the end of December. I think some of the items, we've had some discussion today that might be germane to the conversation relative to councils. Topics tonight is, you know, the, before we even need to get into anything, I think economically speaking, we might be at a place where general fund needs and wants, probably ought to have some sort of stay based on the current economic climate because we put this work out with COVID being, you know, what it was, which wasn't much at the time. And now we know what it is, and it will have an impact to the general climate. And we don't know what that is. So honestly, I is, you know, the director would not enjoy getting them into contract we have to end prematurely. So that's, that's fair, in my opinion, from what I've heard out of council on other topics tonight. Knowing that there's plenty of work to do, we all know we have the work. We need, we need the help. We need the staff. We need the whole nine yards. But point of order being, it's a little different climate right now. So I don't, I don't want to dive into a whole lot of detail if the general sentiment is the same where I would just, you know, hopefully someone make a motion to reject all bids and wait for the economic climate to be understood by the, the city as a whole. So there's not a lot of excitement in the bid itself. I'm certainly here for questions, but, you know, we, we're in a different place than we were, you know, five, six weeks ago when this, when this went out. That's what I have for the mayor's office.
Councilmember Iyer, and then Councilmember Napland and Mayor Protem Remington. Councilmember Iyer, you're on mute.
I, I guess, you know, I appreciate the thoughts and in terms of definitely a consideration. And I think that considering the nature of this, I think, I think it would be appropriate. I, I would be more along the lines of just shelving this for this meeting and potentially either if we had to discuss it further, consider an executive session or workouts, push it to the, to the next meeting. Just due to the nature of, the general nature of the issue.
I do concur with the executive meeting. Council, Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, thanks for putting this together at our request as city council. We are in a different time right now. And I think potentially it sends the wrong message hiring a new FTE at this point when we have a higher priority of maintaining all the FTs we have moving forward with COVID-19. I appreciate your leadership as well and offering this up to pull it. That would be my brother's. I don't really want to remove it from the budget. I think it's still important and necessary to take a look at. I don't know what modifications we might, as council, decide to make. But I, I do think it's appropriate to reject the bids at this point. I think that's the proper procedure. And then at the proper time, we'll, we'll come back and look at it again in the future.
Councilmember Langle?
I concur with that. I think we should reject all bids. That doesn't equate to filling a position. This needs examination, given the condition that we're in with the COVID. So I concur with Mayor Protem Remington's remarks on that.
Councilmember Napland?
I, I don't think this would be an appropriate time to, you know, expand our expenses. So I, I, I don't think accepting any of these bids would be appropriate. But it, it does bring up some other questions that an executive session might be useful. So I'm not really sure if we reject all bids, if that takes this agenda bill out. And I don't know. I just, so I, I concur with Councilmember Iyer that potentially we would want to add further conversation.
I believe there are issues concerning this that would warrant an executive session. So I am full support of pulling and rejecting the bid and discussing this at executive session at a future council meeting. Councilmember Hoag, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I think that I still want to be able to talk about more details about this at an executive session. So I did get a chance to talk with Laura today. And I just think I am, I, I still have questions. So, but are you thinking that we would do that at a different evening?
Ms. Soto has some feedback, so let's let her speak to that, please.
So if the thought is that there would be a potential executive session regarding the item that I previously raised, then that, if the council decides you're going to reject this, the bids, then it's probably not an item that would qualify for an executive session anymore. But I think that's something that maybe I can work with the administration about because I understand what the concerns are just based on the discussions that I've had with the city staff and also with Councilmember Napland, who I spoke with earlier today. And so there might be something that we can at least provide some additional information. And then the council can decide if they want to have a more thorough discussion in, at some later time.
Anne Marie, I was going to ask in addition to that, logistically, if they rejected the bids and then you had, you know, privileged communication with them or executive session ended up happening, whatever. And then they decided that they still wanted to approve the contract or move forward with the contract. Would we have to go out to bid again?
Yeah.
If we reject the bid, yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm I was on the right page there.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think Councilmember Iyer has a question?
Councilmember Iyer?
So are you saying that if we reject the bids, we lose our, our ability to do an executive session?
So it really depends on what the purpose of the executive session is. If it's specifically regarding the issue that I raised earlier today, which I don't want to discuss in an open meeting because of potential attorney-client privilege issues, then there might not be the ability to have an executive session because that particular issue will go away.
Then I would, I guess, I mean, I definitely, in terms of, I share the concerns of, you know, other councilmembers in light of our earlier conversations of proceeding with caution in new expenses in light of all the additional expenses from the emergency. So, sorry, it's getting late. So, so I think, I think my, my thought would be to handle it in a similar vein where, you know, as the roof, clearly this is not going to be as, as critical as the roof in terms of need and more easily deferred and, and, and bids being rejected. But under the guise, I think it's a, an important issue that we could potentially have more closure on and get over as a council and, and make some progress. So I guess that would be my thought with punting to the next meeting.
Ms. Soto, you had your hand up?
Yeah. So I just want to clarify for everyone. The reason why you might potentially want to have an executive session under the email that I sent to you all earlier today is not something that where you'd be able to discuss just general budget issues or general issues with having this position. So if you want to have a discussion about the position and contracting this work and about budget, then that's a discussion that would need to be had in the open meeting anyway. So just keep that in mind if you're deciding, trying to make your decision based on whether or not you would have an executive session. The executive session would still be limited to that very narrow issue that I raised earlier.
Mayor Protem Remington?
First, Anne Marie, thank you for your legal advice this afternoon. It was very timely and helpful. Having been on both sides of the table, negotiating for unions and negotiating for a city for years, I'm comfortable having part of this issue disappear. And moving forward, I think we can have fruitful discussions about what kind of a contract would, would serve us moving forward. And, and with that, I would recommend that we reject the bids associated with Agenda Bill 20-3, AB 20-34, 2020 Parks and Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance.
Do we have a second? Second? Ms. Thomas, can you put your phone on mute, please? Give me two seconds. Was that Councilmember Hoag for the second? Or was it council? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
No, we're going to go.
I'll do a roll call. Hold on.
Yeah, that's right. Roll call, but.
Okay. So this is a motion to reject all bids, correct?
Yes.
Sure that I've got this right. Okay. Councilmember Birdnicki?
Aye.
Councilmember Iyer?
I'm abstaining.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Councilmember Napland?
No. Councilmember Lengel? Where'd she go?
Councilmember Lengel? Apparently she lost contact, and she's trying to get back on.
Hold on a second. Sorry.
Councilmember Lengel, we're asking for your vote affirmative or negative in terms of rejecting the bids, and please unmute.
Tim, just in time. Literally, I was out for all of that last piece.
I am so sorry. I didn't even see you waiting in the waiting room. I wasn't expecting that.
Okay. Are you looking for my vote on what we were last discussing, discussing?
The motion.
Rejecting the bids.
The motion of rejecting the bids, yes.
Yeah. Aye. Reject the bids.
Okay. The ayes have it, motion passes.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we do not have any unfinished business or executive sessions, so unless there are objections, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. Have a good night. Stay healthy and safe.
Thank you, guys, for doing a great job.